Very, very slim. And I requested that some pertinent information start getting put back in. I know that we do have the videotapes, but we're either gonna say, "Watch the videotape, and that's your minutes," or put the pertinent information in. So Teresa's agreed to do it.
Could you clarify what you mean by pertinent information? Do you want verbatim?
Not verbatim. Not verbatim, but there were some things that were discussed. For example, on the park events plan that didn't show up. Jim and I, I thought, made some pertinent comments that indicated we voted a certain way, and they didn't even make it into the minutes. I spoke with Teresa about it, and she concurred that that was probably a reasonable request.
In the past, we've done more detailed minutes, but I did have a conversation with the city manager after we spoke, and he prefers less detailed, not verbatim minutes, since we do it on the videos, but just on the internet.
It's not required to have, you know, some councils just have action minutes. I think we have to do this.
Well, if we make it action minutes, we just call it action minutes. Then I'll give you my comments that I'd like to insert into minutes.
We can accept those comments and bring them back to the next council meeting.
Okay. I'll give you those. Time out. Minutes are a historical perspective, and they're what the record says occurred at the meeting. And we have to be really careful not to allow, especially council members, to come back afterwards and say, "Oh, that's not what I meant." We don't go by what you meant because we don't know what was in your head. We go by what was said on the record. But if there's some pertinent comments that weren't made in the minutes, it certainly is appropriate, either ahead of the meeting or at the meeting, to indicate that you would like those comments to be reflected in the minutes. And that's an indication, and as long as the city clerk has an opportunity to go back and check to make sure that those comments were accurately reflected by what.
No one's asking you to put in what we meant. I specifically spoke about things that were.
I wasn't accusing. I was just pointing out that that's the danger of opening it up to anybody submitting what they want after the fact.
Okay. I think we all did it. And also, as you know, we do videotape, and maybe we'll make some more comments related to some more detail, but obviously, we don't want a verbatim set of minutes. So I have no comments. I've dealt with all my issues. So seeing the items that are polled, and we get a motion to approve items number eight, nine, 10 has been polled, 11's polled, 12 was polled, 13, and 14, and 15, and 16's polled as well.
I thought we were going to hold eight off until next meeting.
Eight is the, no.
The minutes.
No, I thought that the discussion was that we're gonna leave the minutes as with modification that prick is part of the comments that prick is made that's coming back to us. It's more of an understanding with staff, but do you want.
Well, I was told that the minutes would be amended, and now today, this afternoon, right now, I'm told, please, please submit if you want something that you believe is pertinent and was actually said, that we'll put those in the minutes, and we'll look at those next time. And that's what I just understood was said. If that's not what was said, then please correct.
To clarify, I do believe that during our discussions yesterday, I did say it was up to the pleasure of the council.
If Councilmember Winmer has some specific suggestions to add to it that reflect what was said at the council meeting, this is an appropriate time to raise those, whatever they may be. Any member can do that, say, "Look, I said this," or, you know, "Somebody else said this, and I think that should be reflected in the minutes." This is the time to do that.
Well, I didn't bring my notes from the last meeting, and I'm sorry, because I did have a conversation with the clerk, and if there was a contrary decision with what I thought we were, the direction we were gonna go in, I would've brought those and brought them up, so.
There's no hurry to approve the minutes today.
That was what I was saying.
Yeah, I think that if there was some confusion, perhaps the council would indulge for.
Absolutely, that is fine.
Is it for both? Is it for both sets?
It's there.
Just the regular January.
And the February fifth.
Just the one for the meeting.
The January fifteenth.
Just the January. So we'll pull the January fifteenth, which is item number eight.
Continue.
And continue just a half, and then February fifth, we'll approve.
Some.
Okay. All in favor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So we're gonna go ahead at this point and move on to the regular agenda. We'll come back to the items that have been polled on the consent agenda to hear after the regular agenda items. So we're moving over to item number seventeen on the regular agenda, the appointment with Civic Center Advisory Committee and Planning Commission members. And that is report from Teresa DeLisanto.
Yes, you have my written report. Some of you are aware that subsequent to us posting the agenda, that we've discovered that the one applicant for the Civic Center Advisory Committee has a conflict of interest as her property lies within 500 feet of the project.
I guess you're aware of that. I kind of, but, you know, I just have to say, we've had neighbors on the Town Center Task Force, the Blue Ribbon Task Force, you know, throughout the whole thing, you know, next door neighbors, you know, and we wanted to have close people in the environment, you know, be part of it, but nobody ever said anything.
Once you appoint committees that are official and become, create potentially public officials, what we're suggesting goes a little beyond that. I'll let Teresa explain that. But the real issue hinges on, she's within 500 feet, there's no doubt about it. The question is, is she a public official? And that's a definition that arises if, in fact, it's a committee that doesn't have any authority other than to recommend, but the recommendations could push a project in a certain way or other, and the recommendations from that commission are routinely accepted by the city council. Unfortunately, we have a committee that's only been to the city council a couple of times, and their recommendations were accepted unanimously. So what we're proposing, I'll let Teresa talk about the proposal, would basically to clarify the issue of whether this person would be a quote, "public official."
What we're suggesting is that if it's the council's intent to actually appoint the one applicant that we have, is to appoint her as a non-voting member, and during that time to direct the city attorney to work with the applicant, to submit an inquiry to the FPPC on an actual written statement on whether she has.
A decision.
A decision on whether she has an actual conflict business or not.
Okay.
And that could take sixty to ninety days.
Could take six months.
We'll do our best to expedite it.
Why don't we leave the position open then, for that period of time, and see if anybody else wants to still apply? If we're having, appointing, I mean, she can come to the meetings anyway. If she can't vote, she's like a member of the public. So I would recommend, if we're going to go clarify that, then we would leave the position open. There was a comment at the last meeting that perhaps, given the holiday schedules and people just coming back to, you know, they may have missed, even though we did have it in the, in the Athertonian, may have missed it or not had time to apply or whatever. So my recommendation would be investigate for sure, but leave the position open in case somebody else applies, and maybe we have, you know, more of a choice. Not that she, I'm sure, it'd be great to have, for me, somebody who lives in the area that's gonna have to be living with what's here. I think that that makes a heck of a lot of sense, but.
Well, we've had, you know, members on all of the committees in the past, but I don't know, maybe the public.
Councilman DeBoer.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just one point. From the staff's perspective, we don't care one way or the other, but in going to the FPPC, I said six months because I've experienced long delays getting on their agenda. However, if I go to them and say, "We have a person that the city council has indicated will be appointed if it is determined," that puts a little more of an urgency in them coming out with a decision. That's why we thought that would be the best way to go for it. You can do it any way you choose, but that was the staff reasoning behind it.
Councilman DeBoer, do you have a question?
This is clarification.
Please comment.
Clarification. How far does she live from the?
About 490 feet.
Wow.
490 feet is the same as, you know.
As two inches.
As two inches. It doesn't matter under the FPPC. It used to be 300 feet, and then before that, it was kind of a sliding scale that required somebody to go out and do an appraisal of, and finally, the FPP said, "No, no, wait a second. 500 feet and a dollar up or dollar down, and by the way, that's almost anything you do will impact the property value in that minor nature." So if 500 feet's the magic number, and it's measured from the closest points of the two properties.
Okay.
Yeah, that's 590 feet. Couldn't push her up.
490, excuse me.
Wow. Okay. Any public comments on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to us. This is, please.
Yeah, I have a comment. First, I think that, I was on CCAC, so I'm very familiar with the position, and I think it's a committee that works extremely well together, dealing with difficult problems that present a huge opportunity for the town of Atherton in building a new civic center, and it needs to be designed properly, and I think the committee's done a wonderful job of outreach to the community. I think that the committee needs the full membership because there's a lot of work to be done, and in fact, they're kind of at a turning point. The committee had a huge amount of work in the beginning to bring on the consultants and properly go through the outreach that they went through, and right now, they're in the middle of reviewing the budget for the project, which is preliminary. It's still at the master plan stage. It's not into the architectural review stage and design stage, but they're right on the verge of that. So it's my opinion that it would be better, even though she could certainly go to the meetings, as anyone from the public can, I think she'd feel more engaged with the committee if she were appointed pursuant to the staff's recommendation. So personally, I would, I mean, she seems, I've reviewed her credentials. She looks like a great candidate. I think it's important for us to have somebody from this neighborhood area, I'm sorry, she's under 500 feet, from the center, but, and I think, I understand staff's recommendation. I'd rather appoint her than leave the position open.
I feel the same way, that we should appoint her and then do the due diligence with the FPPC. I mean, would we be fined? I mean, if we, what's the harm? She would maybe have to resign if the FPPC came back with a ruling?
Well, I would say, I would make the appointment conditional on, her full appointment conditional on.
Clearance from the FPPC.
Clearance from the FPPC. But in the meantime, she can be a non-voting member because that's essentially, if she's appointed, it's kind of a polite way of saying, "You're going to be a member if the FPPC agrees," and I think that gives more motivation to attend meetings and things like that.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna tend to agree that it's pretty tough wanting a job that you haven't really, you know, don't feel you're gonna be there for very long, but knowing that we're gonna go through the process with the FPPC to get the clearance, and the fact that she would be accepting if she got elected, appointed as a non-voting member, and it would be very clear to her that if in fact there was a conflict created by the FPPC, that she would not get the position, and we would republish notification to relive for somebody else. So I'm comfortable with going forward and taking a vote on this under those conditions.
So I'll make a motion. Oh, does public, is she, is the applicant here?
We already did that.
We already took public comments.
We already took public comments, so we're really at the point where we're either gonna do a straw ballot or a ballot.
Why don't we just do a regular ballot, because I don't think that there's.
I think we just make a motion because I think that we have to kind of amend the appointment.
Right.
So I'll move to appoint Christine David to the Civic Center Advisory Committee, subject condition upon approval, clearance from the FPPC, and direct staff to make that inquiry with the FPPC post haste with urgency attached.
With an amendment that it would be a non-voting position until after we get the hearing.
So, yeah, so point of clarification, so.
So she could come to February 24th.
But now as a member, but a non-voting member.
Right.
Full participation is conditional on FPPC.
And with the clarity in advance that she, knowing that it all stems on the FPPC.
So nice that we have a whole group to kind of pull us all together like that. That's great. So that was my motion.
I'll say.
With all the additives.
With all the additives, okay.
Second, so any discussion? Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. No, go ahead.
The second part of that staff report involves appointments of the planning commission. We have one vacancy. There's two applicants. Originally, we thought one of the applicants would be activated, but as I look through the audience, I don't see either of the applicants here.
So can we make a comment publicly about the applicants?
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't know. I really sad that Jeffrey Lee isn't here because I don't know him. I've not met him. I haven't had a chance. I've just read his CV and application. Of course, everyone knows William Grinley. He is one of my greatest heroes in lots of ways because of all that he's done for the town on high-speed rail and being on planning. And he did resign from his planning commission position a year ago when new appointments were made, and he was up for a new appointment because he was so involved with high-speed rail. And now that that has kind of winded down a bit, he's not spending so much time. And I think that I can certainly understand his feelings of sentiment of wanting to fill out Herm's term of one year because he had served with Herm for so long previously on planning. I'm very conflicted about how I, William is a known entity. Jeffrey Lee is a new member of our community, not only a new member, but a member from the West Side who is wanting to get involved with the town and volunteer. And I really would love to see more new members become involved with the town as they can. So I, that's just my, I still don't know exactly which way I'm going. I was truly hoping that Mr. Lee was going to be here to talk about his desire to be here on planning, but those are some of my thoughts.
Any questions coming in?
No, I just have one other comment. I guess William, as my understanding, if you could confirm, William is just saying he's going to bring his institutional knowledge back to fulfill Herm's position and doesn't have an interest in, at this point in time, to continue. Is that correct?
That's not true.
Correct. That is what William indicated to me in my office. Now, this term is to fill out the rest of Herm's, making it so only so.
He could always change his mind, but that's what he.
But he has stated in writing.
He has stated in writing.
I am willing to reapply in June 2014 if the council sees fit. So it's.
Right, but he. Clarification.
I just.
He did say that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I, that's, you know.
I just was asking, that's all. That's one major I understood.
We get it. Councilman DeBoer.
So, two, two questions of clarification. First, Herm's term goes through June 2015.
Yes.
Isn't that right?
Yes.
Okay. So I understood his comment that he was willing to reapply in June 2014 if we wanted to reassess it this June. I didn't quite understand that, but I don't, I didn't understand that.
Okay.
Second, I understand the urgency that the CCAC has in filling its open position because it's got so much on its plate. I'm not as familiar with the planning commission, so I don't know if the urgency of filling that position is equally pressing. I mean, I'd prefer, and maybe they're both the way because this is after all President's Week, so there's kids that are on vacation, and that may be why they're not here, I'm not sure. I'd love to give them an opportunity to talk to the council. It's certainly not a requirement, but I'm uncertain as to the urgency for the planning commission.
So can I just make a comment to your comment there about the planning commission? So currently, there's only four members, and I think there is a bit of an urgency to add a fifth because of things that are on their plate, and we have a planning commissioner here tonight who might want to speak to that. Because, as you know, we have one commissioner who needs to recuse herself periodically on things that come before them. And so if there's only four members and there's a recusal, then you'd be down to three, and that does put, I mean, it's, the planning commission is handicapped as it is, even on a full boat, and with only having four, I think it handicaps them a little bit more. And so.
Thank you. Councilman DeBoer.
No, I just thought that maybe Phil would like to speak and say something on behalf as he's the vice chair and the current acting chair of the planning commission.
Please, thank you.
I guess we're all handicapped to some degree, but we do have four members that are on it. Two of us have fairly good experience on the planning commission, and there's two new ones. Eric Lane has been on for a year and a half, and Paul Tonelli is just on last fall, so he's still pretty much in a learning experience. We do have some serious things coming up to look at, and it's very difficult when only three commissioners are there to vote on or look at a matter and talk about it. So my recommendation would be to pick one of these, hopefully the one with the most experience, so we get some experience in the next year and a half until July of 2015, when there will be two positions open. Herm will position, and I will be turned out in 2015 also. So it'll be two real life positions, positions a year for new blood. So we need some experience right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none coming back, council. Any other comments from council?
No, I think we should make a selection as Elizabeth has indicated.
Vice Chair DeBoer.
I think both of these candidates are really qualified. I'm glad to see that we have people who have such terrific resumes applying for this position, so I'm really glad to see that. I hear the needs of the planning commission. I appreciate that clarification. I think we should vote.
Councilwoman DeLoos.
I think we should vote, and I understand the need for someone who is experienced. I know Eric Lane came on the same time as Commissioner Winmer came on, so, and then Tonelli came. So it's a relatively new group of commissioners, and these are some very serious things that are ahead of them. I know that the high-speed rail decision, there's something looming on March 15th, another decision that could make or break, and I just hope that that continues. I understand the need for experience, so.
Okay. I, thank you. I agree, and I think it's, we're at a point where we have to put somebody on there. It's somewhat critical to keep stability in that area, so I think it's time, I wish both of them were here to actually ask questions too, but unfortunately, they're not. And so we're gonna deal with what we have and put it up to a.
Just remember, put your names on the ballots as well, please. First vote is for William Grinley. That's by Mayor Wiest. Second vote is William Grinley.
That's you, ma'am. All right, put the name.
Oh.
Thank you.
Third for William Grinley, and a fourth for William Grinley.
So I take it everybody voted. So I take it everybody voted.
All right.
No secret.
Through the chair, could you reach out specifically to Mr. Lee as the mayor of Atherton and thank him very, very kindly for making the application? And just reach out and encourage him to come to the planning commission meetings and don't give up on us, and we were kind of back against the wall, having the need for an experienced commissioner step in and hit the ground running.
No, absolutely, I'll do it.
Is that okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to item number eighteen, mid-year budget report for 2013, 2014, and budget for more adjustments. Finance Director Robert, clear?
Good evening, Mayor, and council members of the public. For you today is our mid-year budget report for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. Recommendation is to receive and file a mid-year budget review for the general fund and adopt the resolution authorization authorizing budget amendment for adjustments. This report, a basic city council and the town's financial position for the current fiscal year, it addresses only the general fund, and the report reviews the town's financial position as of December 31st, 2013. The mid-year report is an elevated look at the town's revenues expenditures at mid-year and does not involve a line item discussion. In viewing some portion of page five of the report, in looking at our overview of the mid-year and analyzing to the fiscal year end, the net change in fund balance to the general fund is $287,254. To summarize, we have the beginning year-end fund balance of $8,362,456,000. Projected general funds at the fiscal year end are $12,152,000. Of that, original budget was $10.8 million, and we are projected an increased revenue of $1.3 million. Thus, we have a $12.152 projected revenues at fiscal year end. That coupled with our parcel tax of $1.1 million projects for a total of $13.2 million in revenues. That being said, available, total available revenues are $21.6 million. And looking at the expenditure side, the original town budget was $10.4 million for fiscal year 1314. During the year, the council authorized several changes to the budget for a number of priorities totaling $2.2 million. Mainly, $2 million of it was for the OPEP contributions. On the remaining $293,000 was for other council priorities, which are part of, on page four, which show a breakdown of the total of the $2.2 million. Those included $36,000 for co-enforcement, $10,000 towards additional emergency preparedness, $141,000 for enhanced maintenance to H.P. Palmer Park and town right-of-ways, $105,000 for Civic Center Master Plan, and $2 million towards our OPEP. Overall operating expenditures are. Overall, operating expenditures are expected to be within budgeted expenditures with the exception of building and PD departments. As you see on this summary page, there is a mid-year adjustment request of $236,687. Of that, building is $166,000 and PE is $70,000. This brings the total expenditures to $12,987. And with that, our projected fiscal year ending fund balance would be $8,650,000 and $210,000. And speaking to the fiscal impact that this has, the only fiscal impact is the $236,000 in additional appropriations. The building departments, increase in appropriations was due to the increase in projected revenue and that being said, the revenues is coincides with the contract for contract building services. So the increase in projected revenue results in an increase in the expenditure side based on the contract. And also on the police department side, it's requesting $70,298 for additional expenditures, mainly due to the department has had staffing challenges due to several vacancies in vacant positions. Council has authorized funding for 202 additional positions to allow the department to recruit and fill at a minimum for staffing levels. The department has been active and diligent in recruiting these staffing levels and has not been able to fill the vacancies with permanent personnel. Also, there is an increase due to staffing level demands for overtime, temporary help and ongoing recruitment costs. So that being said, these costs are just requested as part of the ongoing minimum level operations as the staff continues to work to fill the vacant positions. So that being said, I'd like to open it up to council for any questions that we may have, but again, I'd like to just finish off that projected end of year fund balance is $8.6 million. And again, the town is also continuing to be fiscal prudent with fiscal management. We have also, we are addressing our long-term liabilities, capital project needs and other community priorities and this is evident in that at the end of this fiscal year, we are still having a positive fund balance and also addressing community and town's long-term needs.
Perfect, thank you, Robert. Any questions for Robert?
Excellent report.
Excellent report, thank you, Robert. Any questions or comments for the public? Seeing none, bringing it back to council. Any final comments from any councilman?
Sure, I have a couple of comments. I did speak for an extended period of time yesterday with Robert and I, A, I appreciate the comments and the study that he had put together. I fully understand the, some of the adjustments that are here on page 204 with regards to how we've got to where we are and some of the adjustments we've made so far. I understand also the need for making the quick change with regards to the building department because the department head cannot reallocate money from another department and so there's no additional money because the revenue share and building department needed to have additional money so we could move forward with that. I have some questions with regards to the changes and adding another $70,000 to the budget. First off, I'm not in favor. You set a budget, our budget's only for 12 months. Unforeseen things happen, you either overrun or you underrun and that's where we are. I realize we want to end the budget on time and under budget, but I went back to the budget and we did forecast and we did approve that there would be two people that would hopefully be coming on board because the need to recruit some, some new officers because of some issues, the fact that we can't hire somebody right away as soon as we have an opening and we want to have these things open. So there were two positions open and $239,000 was approved as an increase beginning January 1st to the police department. That comes out to be $40,000 a month. So we're now in the second month, so that's $80,000 savings that we should have had because even if we hire somebody starting March 1st, which is in the week, they won't be coming on board, getting paid since January, they'll be paid since March. So there's an extra $80,000 in there. So I understand also the need that, hey, we've had some unforeseen things like asking people working overtime, maybe spending more money on recruitment costs as identified in the pack, that adds up to $70,000. So that $80,000 should more than compensate for the $70,000. So I'm personally against adding another $70,000 because that would essentially say that we didn't spend the $80,000 and now we're adding $70,000 and now we're suddenly sitting really at what we originally thought as $150,000 over budget. So I think that a department head can reallocate budget classes within his own department and so the police chief should be able to reallocate the money from his salaries into other items such as contract labor and things that are associated with people such as the recruiting costs. Also, the police department should have had some savings with regards to the changing with the new, with the new contract that we just signed up. So in summary, I'm not in favor of, I am in favor of making the adjustment to address the overrun in the building department, that's well understood and only the city manager with the approval of council can do that, but I'm not in favor of making the change for the police chief. We may be over budget there, but I think we need to show that we're over budget and that will help us in our budget process next year.
I did speak with the city manager about Councilmember Widmer's concerns and he's okay with applying the unspent salary to the adjustment. His only recommendation not to was to be able to use it for its intended purposes opposed to recruiting vacancies and he's okay with applying the unspent salary and the money as well.
Yeah, no, we do hire other people as of March 1st and then we'll be spending that $40,000 from there, but there's...